Good evening and welcome to the City Council meeting on January 15, 2013. First, our meeting will start with our invocation by West Covina Police Officer Jeff Mosley, and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Fred Sykes. Please rise.
Let us pray. God, we recognize your presence here tonight, and thank you for the freedom we have together as a community in order to discuss important matters that will influence and shape the future of our city. We ask for your grace and divine blessing this evening as we address these important matters. Lord, we pray that you will give our mayor, Shelley Sanderson, Mayor Pro Tem, Steve Herford, fellow City Councilmembers, Rob Satello and Fred Sykes, the ability to lead our city with integrity, humility, and compassion in accordance with your will. Give them wisdom and guidance as they work diligently to find solutions and address each of the difficult challenges that happen. Bless each and every person here tonight who draws closer together as a community and help us to set the example of other communities.
Please join me in the prayers to the flag of our nation. Ready, begin.
Mayor Sanderson?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Herford?
Here.
Councilmember Satello?
Here.
Councilmember Sykes?
Here.
Thank you very much. Mr. City Attorney, any items to report out of closed session?
Yes, Madam Mayor. The record should reflect that the City Council and the West Covina Successor Agency did convene their special meetings pursuant to the notices of special meetings that had been posted and provided. This is my report out from the closed session from those two special meetings. With regard to the City Council's special meeting, record should reflect that Mayor Pro Tem Herford, Councilmember Satello and Councilmember Sykes were present for all the items that I'm going to list for you right now. First item is conference with legal counsel existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9A, case of City of West Covina and West Covina Community Development Commission versus Hassan Imports partnership. The record should reflect that this item was also heard on the West Covina Successor Agency's special meeting. There was a report provided by special counsel to the City and the successor agency. However, there was no final action on this item, and there's nothing further to report on this item. With regard to the next item, conference with legal counsel existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9A, case of City of Alhambra. At Al versus County of Los Angeles, there was a report provided by the City Attorney's Office on this litigation. There was no final action, and there's nothing further to report on this item. In regard to the next case, conference with legal counsel existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9A, West Covina Police Officers Association versus City of West Covina. Again, there was a report provided by the City Attorney's Office on this litigation. There was no final action, and there's nothing further to report on this item. And finally, with regard to the last case of dissipated litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9A, there was a report provided by staff to the City Council. There was no final action taken on this item, and there's nothing further to report. And that concludes my report out from closed session.
Thank you very much. At this time, is there any changes to the agenda, Mr. City Manager?
No, there are no changes to the agenda tonight.
Okay, thank you. And at this time, we have our presentation portion of our meeting, and I'm going to come forward. It's a very exciting evening. We have our certificate of recognition for our Home for the Holidays contest winners. It was a great time. The council had gone out on a bus, and we were able to look at all the homes. And my family actually went, which was pretty exciting, to have all of them at the same place at one time. So it was very exciting, a lot of fun to go with my colleagues and our staff, and just wanted to thank everybody for participating in our contest. So at this time, oh, let me read a few statistics before I come forward. It was rainy, and we were carrying umbrellas, and some fuses were going out. So we tried really hard to get there quickly and appreciate everybody and everything they did. The homes were so amazing and so beautiful. And then in addition to that, we had 150 residents from the community that were part of the bus tour that went to the homes before Christmas, which was really exciting. Our community services did a great job. Thank you so much, Chris, for coordinating all that and making it a wonderful event for our community. This year's participants, the Community Services and Senior Services Commission for their help as well, and the judging, and the community services staff again for coordinating the event. And each honoree will receive a gift certificate and recognition and a gift card at Target, which they'll probably go buy more Christmas decorations, I would imagine. I understand he is not here this evening, is that correct, Chris? So I'll come forward at this time, and we're going to start bringing everyone forward. Where's Chris? There you are. So we'll have that and give that to him. Okay, I would first like, can you all hear me okay? Our second place is Naomi Paul and a $75 gift card. Naomi Paul, are they here? Oh, there you are. Oh, my gosh. Yes. Our first honorable mention, I'm going to call forward Marissa Orr. Is that Marissa? Come forward. David, there you are. Okay, the next item on our agenda is our oral communications. At this time, this is where you can address the council on any issues on the agenda or non-agendized items. And let me remind the public, if you do have a non-agendized item, we can't really address the issue because it's not agendized. But if there is any issues, I would like everybody to call City Manager's Office or call City Hall, and we'd be more than glad to meet with you at 626-939-8401. I have it memorized, I call it quite a bit. So if there's anything that anyone should ever need, please bring it to our attention. So with that, there's this yellow speaker cards at the top of the stairs you fill out and address the council. So with that, our first speaker is Elsie Messman.
Where is it? Mayor?
Yes.
Councilstaff and everyone here tonight. My name is Elsie Messman, a resident of West Covina. I'm going to go back to the November 20, 2012 council meeting. Article 7 stated that you transferred $8,000 from the sewer fund reserves and $8,000 from the gas tax fund reserve for replacement of a maintenance yard phone system. My question to council, why didn't you wait until you had enough money to install these?
In August 2007, there was a public hearing to increase the sewer rate by 8% from $25.97
to $28.05 per year. The difference was $2.08. Now, I question the second increase. On July 2012 to June 30, 2013, my tax bill states our city sewer rate is now $53.31, almost 100% increase. If we are using $8,000 for the phone system from the sewer fund, then my question to this council is why did we need the big increase in the first place if we're not using it for the sewer system and we're using it for something that it wasn't supposed to be? On December 17, 2012, West Covina lost a valuable voice in the community. Joanne Willner was a resident who not only knew what was going on in the city, but understood and cared about the direction of the city. By the time Joanne was 19, she had her first bachelor's of arts degree from the University of Chicago. She then went to UCLA, where she earned a second bachelor's degree in accounting. Bernie and Joanne started dating in 1954 and then married in 1955. They were married for almost 58 years. They purchased their first home in West Covina in 1956, where they raised their three children. As a resident, she felt the local government should be accountable to the community. She lived and cared for her city. Joanne could anecdotally go through every item on the agenda without any political bias and offered her opinion in which way the city should proceed. Perhaps if the council had listened to her reasoning, the city would not be in a financial pickle they are in now. Joanne was also very active in other groups, especially the League of Women Voters. She definitely was someone who, once she put her mind to it, doing something, she did it. Whether it was for leisure, learning, once she became focused on an endeavor, she would not only complete the mission, she would master it. In conclusion, Joanne meant a lot to the city as a whole, but most importantly to many people, had the pleasure to know and love her. West Covina lost one of its great intellects in the community and a resident who cared and acted in the best interest of the city. We'll miss you, Joanne. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Shirley Buchanan.
Good evening, Mayor Sanderson and members of the City Council. I too wanted to say a few brief words about Joanne Willner. It's the friends we meet along life's road that help us appreciate the journey, and that is true of our friend, Joanne Willner. The city and many of the residents that attend Planning Commission and City Council meetings lost a dear friend unexpectedly on December 17, 2012. My first experience of hearing Joanne talk on city issues was at either a City Council or a Planning Commission meeting. She knew the development of West Covina from 1958 like no other resident. When she turned in her yellow card to speak, we knew she had analyzed the item, visited the site if it related to a planning issue, and her opinion as to whether it should go forward or not was right on. She always came to the meetings prepared. I would like to request two things from the city. One, send a letter in the name of the city to Bernie and their family, letting them know how well thought of she was by city staff, and that the city appreciated her many contributions toward the betterment of the city. And two, to adjourn the meeting tonight in memory of, in her honor. Our journey and friendship with Joanne was too short, but our memories of her many, well-thought-out contributions on housing, zoning, and budgets to the city made a difference in all of our lives. My second item is around August of 2012, it was declared by the city and the council that there is a balanced budget. The residents that have been attending council meetings for a long time get uncomfortable when it sounds like there isn't going to be enough money in a current budget to pay for police and fire. After last week's Oversight Board meeting, I question, what does a balanced budget really mean? At last Thursday's Oversight Board meeting, there was an item that involved a payback to the state of $12 million. There was some discussion between Mr. Chung and one of the board members about whether or not that $12 million was actually in a redevelopment reserve fund. If I heard Mr. Chung correctly, he kept trying to make a strong plea that the city needed to have the $12 million in order to meet the cost of fire and safety the rest of the year. Mr. Chung's statement is scary. If my understanding is not what Mr. Chung was trying to convey, I would like to have him send me a reply in writing clarifying the exchange between him and the board member. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is John Shoemaker.
Good evening, council. During our future for the third time in two years, our City Council has the opportunity to point a new member. This council appointment must help restore some of the financial stability we need in our city. We must embark on a path which shows boldness instead of the safety of friends or longtime supporters. We need a new direction and expertise on this council, a person with the knowledge and ability to take us forward towards restored fiscal responsibility. Our city has many wonderful attributes, two major regional shopping centers on the freeway, and a fairly affluent demographic, just to name two. As with any community, we have people at both ends of the spectrum, and we cannot forget those at the lower end. This election must not be about rewarding someone for service to our community or winning votes. It must be about winning stability financially. We need to remain a great community for all of those who choose to live here, raise families here, or visit our local businesses. The errors of the past must remain in the past. We cannot change history. What is done is done, but we need to learn from those decisions that did not work out as we had hoped. Somebody much smarter than I once said, you know, if you don't learn from history, you're bound to repeat it. We need to have members on the council with a thick skin who do not take criticism as a personal affront or disloyalty or disliking our community. If you truly love this community, you'll want to resolve the almost $400 million of debt our city is on the hook for. We must be able to say no to those wanting to use public money for private gain. We cannot continue to be business-friendly while being resident-unfriendly. Giving a business $1 for a payback of $0.50 is being business-friendly and resident-unfriendly because a resident must give up something when you give away more than you bring in. We need a member of the council who'll take responsibility for their actions. Leadership is about leading, not complaining about what others do or do not do. And most importantly, we need a member of the City Council who will never use the phrase, "Well, nobody I talked to has complained about this issue," especially when the council chamber is filled with people stating their unhappiness with the direction the council is taking the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Herb Redholt.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Sanderson and councilmembers. I have a couple of topics. First, a rather sad one. If you haven't heard or noticed, the Staples at the Heights is closed. It's gone, and they're very quick to remove their signage and leave. So this is disturbing to me because it's a loss of jobs, it's a loss of, you know, tax revenue that the city needs, and it's another big box vacancy that needs to be filled in our city. The other point I'd like to raise, a couple, a few meetings back, I asked at this dais for an update on the litigation between the city and West Covina Motors and Hassan Imports. And that evening, my question was not responded to, and listening to the City Attorney tonight and recently in the newspaper, it was reported that the court had transferred the Chapter 11 bankruptcy to a Chapter 7, which means it goes into liquidation and a trustee has been appointed to oversee the continuation or lack of continuation of services or business at the location. So my question is, if perhaps we could get at least an explanation now of the process that will take place and where the city, what position the city is in as far as the resolution of this? Because quite frankly, the budget was just referred to, and the budget was balanced with the consideration of potential tax revenues coming from a new operator at those locations. And if you've been by there recently, I don't think they're selling gum there. So, you know, we're not going to make a whole lot off of selling nothing. So it is in the best interest of the city, obviously, to get a viable volume dealer that's going to move automobiles off those lots. If we could perhaps have an explanation of what the process is now and where the city stands on all this, because I think we all have a vested interest in getting those dealerships back up and running. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Gary Lawson.
Good evening, Mayor, members and staff. I'm just here to kind of confirmation with an announcement to thank you and for the privilege of working with Chris Chung the last four or five years with the community development. I was involved in many projects, and I had the opportunity to work alongside of him and Mike Lee. And I would have to, I'm compelled to suggest to you and recommend that Chris Chung, what I observed was a very diligent leadership that he portrayed, and I represent the business community because I'm around business people every day, five days a week, and I would like, and representing many of these businesses, I would like to suggest to you the confidence that the business community has in Chris Chung as your city manager. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. If there are no other speakers, I would like to conclude the oral communications, but I did have a couple responses to some of the residents, as I explained earlier. Thank you all for speaking and being here this evening. If it's something that's not on the agenda, we can't legally discuss it, but there were some items that were brought forward that I would be more than glad to meet with residents. Run was in reference to the increase of sewer services. Mr. City Manager, we can discuss that and possibly contact the resident and see if they're willing to meet on that. The second one was in reference to the oversight and the reply. We'll get that information to that resident as well, and if there's interest in a meeting, we can do that as well to get some clarity. Lastly, was a resident that talked about the Al Hassan litigation issue. It's obviously very complex and has been going on for quite some time. What answers we do have, maybe we could compile something or meet with that resident as well. And, you know, I know the City Attorney's looking at me as well to make sure that we can let the people know as best as possible, because I think a lot of things are probably very unclear at this time. So with that, you know, I don't want people to think we're not trying to be responsive. However, there are certain things we cannot discuss unless they are agendized. That way, once they're agendized, then the public knows they're being discussed, and then the public can come to the meetings. I think that's kind of the intent of the Roberts Rule. So with that, I think that we have those items, and I'll be talking to the City Manager and get back with those residents. If there are no other comments, we'll move forward with our agenda. Okay? Thank you again all for coming and speaking on oral communications. The first item we have is our consent calendar. Do I have a motion or anybody need to pull any items off the consent calendar?
Make a motion, approve.
I have a motion.
I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor of approval of the consent calendar. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for zero. We have our public hearing. This matter is item number six, is set for public hearing and relates to the General Plan Amendment to Change the Land Use Designation for Property Located at 512 South Valinda Avenue from Low Medium Residential to Medium Residential and a Zone Change to Change the Zoning from Single Family Residential R1 to Specific Plan Number 25 Waiver of Specific Plan and the Mitigated Negative Declaration of Environmental Impact. Will the City Clerk please verify that proper legal notice has been given? Yes, has verified. Thank you very much. At this time, I shall open the public hearing on the General Plan Amendment Number 12-01 and the Zone Change of 12-01 and the Mitigated Negative Declaration of Environmental Impact. There will first be the presentation of the staff report, and then we shall hear from those in favor of the proposal, and then those opposed. Finally, those in favor will have the opportunity to give rebuttal to any testimony received in opposition. Mr. Chung, who will present that staff report?
Mr. Sanderson will present that staff report.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. The proposal is to construct a 19-unit small lot, single-family subdivision on a portion of the property at 512 South Valinda Avenue, which is the location of the Emmanuel First Lutheran Church. The subject property is located on the northeast corner of Service and Valinda. The project includes a tentative parcel map to divide the current property owned by Emmanuel First Lutheran Church into three parcels, and this is a little confusing, actually. This is north, so this is the Wash, this is Service, and this is Valinda. So I'll go through the parcels. Parcel 1 would be 2.3 acres, and would continue to be used by the church. So that's this area here, which is along Service. This is the church building. This is the parking lot that serves it. This is a house that's on Service that's not included in this. Parcel 2 would be 2.31 acres and is the property that the subdivision is proposed upon, and that's this area here, goes to the Wash, and there's some vacant school buildings that are on that, and then a large grass area off to the east side of the property. Parcel 3 would be 0.41 acres and would continue to be used as a parking lot by East Valley Health Center. And that's this area here in the corner, right here, that's already developed as a On parcel 2, the apple is proposing to construct 19 residential units accessed via a private street designed in a loop formation. Lot sizes range from 3,112 square feet to 5,035 square feet. The private street would be accessed by, through Valinda Avenue just south of the parking lot for East Valley Health Center. Vehicular security gates are proposed for the development, and a six-foot block wall is proposed around the development. A decorative block wall is proposed along the Valinda frontage that includes a three-foot wide landscape buffer. The existing six-foot wrought iron fence that divides the existing parking lot from the project site would be retained. And what I'm talking about there is this area here, there's an existing wrought iron fence that will stay in place in this location that already was constructed at the time the parking lot was constructed. A recreation area is proposed in this vicinity, right sort of in the crook of where that parking The setbacks in development standards are similar to other small lot, single-family developments in the city. The one exception is the side setback, and this is kind of a typical formation of some of the lots. They're proposing a three-foot, three-inch side yard setback, and they're proposing to grant an easement to one of the adjacent properties. And that's this area here in the corner, right here, that's already developed as a On parcel two, the applicant is proposing to construct 19 residential units accessed via a private street designed in a loop formation. Lot sizes range from 3,112 square feet to 5,035 square feet. The private street would be accessed by, through Valinda Avenue just south of the parking lot for East Valley Health Center. Vehicular security gates are proposed for the development, and a six-foot block wall is proposed around the development. A decorative block wall is proposed along the Valinda frontage that includes a three-foot wide landscape buffer. The existing six-foot wrought iron fence that divides the existing parking lot from the project site would be retained. And what I'm talking about there is this area here, there's an existing wrought iron fence that will stay in place in this location that already was constructed at the time the parking lot was constructed. A recreation area is proposed in this vicinity, right sort of in the crook of where that parking The setbacks and development standards are similar to other small lot, single-family developments in the city. The one exception is the side setback, and this is kind of a typical formation of some of the lots. They're proposing a three-foot, three-inch side yard setback, and they're proposing to grant an easement to one of the adjacent properties. The location of the walls will give the impression that there's a zero lot line between the properties. I'll explain that a little bit here. So this represents the property line, the change in colors between the lighter green and the darker green. And the proposal is to build a wall here, and for this property to grant their portion of that side yard setback to this property. So in effect, this property would have access to this side yard, and like this, this property next door would have access to this side yard. So basically operate as a zero lot line formation. The applicant is proposing two unit types and two types of architecture. All units would be two stories. Plan one would be 2,148 square feet, which includes a 400-square garage. And plan two would be 2,429 square feet, also including a 400-square-foot garage. The proposal includes a Spanish design, which you see before you here, and also a French architectural design. All units would have four parking spaces, two in the garage and two in the driveway in front of the garage, and a total of 14 guest parking spaces are provided along the loop road. And just to point out those parking spaces quickly, you can sort of see them here, the lines, the dashed lines are parallel parking spaces along the interior of that loop road. Staff discussed with the applicant the importance of designing to reduce privacy impacts to the single-story units, to the, single-story houses to the east. So in this area, there's a cul-de-sac with some houses. These are all single-story houses. All these houses that are proposed are two-story. The applicant has designed lots six and seven, which are two of the lots at the eastern side, with high windows on the rear elevation of the second story to reduce ability for those houses to have visibility into the existing lots. In addition, the applicant has proposed a tree row along the eastly property line in this vicinity here. That will provide a buffer as the trees grow over time. And lastly, the applicant has included a standard in the specific plan prohibiting balconies on those four lots that are adjacent to those single-story units. The planning commission reviewed the project on December 11th, 2012. The commission discussed the project layout, circulation, guest parking, construction phasing, and the protection of the privacy of the single-family properties to the east. At the conclusion of the hearing, the commission voted five to zero to approve the project. So while the planning commission approved the parcel map and the tract map, the city council must act upon the general plan amendment, zone change, and the mitigated negative declaration of environmental impact. The current general plan designation on the site is low-medium residential, which allows up to eight units per acre. This development is 8.2 units per acre, so the applicant is requesting a land use designation change to medium residential, which allows from eight to 15 units per acre. The proposed designation would provide a, the proposed change in the designation would provide a transition from the single-family residential development to the east and the south, to the commercial development to the west and the north. In addition, the proposal is for a zone change, changing lot two of the parcel map from single-family residential to specific plan number 25, also called a waverly specific plan, the project will be known as waverly, and adopting specific plan number 25. The specific plan tailors zoning standards to the development and to the site. A mitigated negative declaration of environmental impact was prepared in compliance with SEQA. Technical studies were prepared, including air quality and traffic. And the planning commission and the planning department are now recommending approval of the general plan amendment, zone change, and mitigated negative declaration. That concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Is there any questions by staff?
Madam Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tim Herford.
Jeff, I just want to clarify, on the, you said it was a play area, but on the map it shows it as an open space area. Is it really a playground, or is it just open space?
It's basically open space. You see some little black boxes that are up in here? There's some tables and barbecue pits, but they're not proposing a tot lot.
Okay, so do we derive park development fees from a project?
Yes, there will be park development fees.
Okay.
Any other questions from council? Thank you, Jeff, for that. Is there anyone? I don't have any speaker cards on the item. Is there anyone that's wishing to speak in favor of the project? Please come forward and state your name.
Good evening, Brett Whitehead, Brandywine Homes. Just like to thank you for listening to our request. We're very excited to be into the city of West Covina with our first project. We've worked hand-in-hand with staff and commend staff. They've been a great staff to work with, and I think we've come up with a really fantastic project. Excited to finally be here at this stage, and look forward to closing and actually building out the project over the next 18 months. So we're here to answer any questions, so feel free.
All right, thank you so much. Any questions? It looks like I have a question. Councilmember Sotelo.
It's not really a question. I'd like to thank you for the windows and stuff you put back there, for the residents back there, because it is going right in their backyard, and it really, you really took some time to consider these things. And it's really, from my seat, it's nice to see a builder work with that and do that on their own. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The CCs and Rs, they are to be drafted in the future?
Yes.
And I have been out to the site, and a concern that I have would be the graffiti issue. I can see from visiting the site that it's going to be an issue. So how are we addressing that issue? Will that be in the CC and Rs?
Yeah, that would be in the CC and Rs, and I believe in the front, where we have the front wall, there's quite a bit of landscaping there to deter any kind of graffiti. But the HOA association would be out there, if there was any graffiti, immediately removing it or painting over it.
So if I understand you clearly, the, I'm particularly concerned about the exterior walls.
Sure.
Because I'm a stickler for, when I see it, I call it, and it's on speed dial. So therefore, then the complete surrounding walls, your HOA will address that issue?
Yes.
Okay, do you have any idea of how long that would take if that is observed and you're notified?
You mean response time?
Yes, sir.
They're usually pretty quick. I'd say, you know, within a couple of hours typically, unless they were in a meeting or busy. But, you know, it hasn't been an issue on our projects. We've built multiple projects. This is really what we do, is the infill development. And, you know, on the back walls, those would be buffered with our residents, the neighbors behind us. We have the edge between us and the church, so I'd assume the church would be pretty responsive to on calling the HOA or addressing the situation. On the front, there's not a lot of wall, and obviously the city would be pretty responsive. But again, you're going to have a lot of landscaping, so, yep. But typically, they're pretty responsive. Within a day, they're out and taking care of it.
Okay. So I also believe that you probably observed other areas where they take care of it with those plants. And I would think that if the plants do take hold and they're taken care of, that that should solve any issue, but this would just be temporary, a concern, because the plants were covered.
Correct.
So you will make sure those plants are, were taken care of, right?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Believe me, the last thing we want are homeowners calling us.
Any other questions? Thank you so much for your time. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the project?
Good evening, council. My question is, I don't have a problem with it, but my question was, I was looking at the map right there. From what I understand, on the rear yard, the walls don't come up to the edge of the house right there. And then on the left-hand side, that property is going to belong to the neighbor? So my, if I understand that right, what's to stop, say, like your neighbor's kids playing up against your house, or how you know, if you have a problem inside your house, they correct it, if that piece belongs to the neighbor? Am I understanding that wrong?
I understood it to be a six-and-a-half-foot spread, is that right? With three-and-a-half on each side, no?
But he said that the rear wall is only going to go to the back of the house, and on the left-hand side, all of that, there's not going to be a wall there. That's going to belong to the neighbor on the left-hand side. So I'm just, what's going to stop them if you have a problem?
Yeah.
How it's supposed to, its idea is that this will be the property line. However, there'll be an easement. And with any easement, there's easement rights that are granted, there's privileges and responsibilities. So they're also proposing, I didn't cover this necessarily, but there will be no windows on this property. So this will be a solid wall. And yes, there would be access here for this property. The easement rights would likely grant this property ability to come over here and do cleanup or maintenance. But there would be activity that would be allowed here from this property.
What is the space between the two? I thought it was six-and-a-half.
Six-and-a-half, you're correct.
All right.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone in opposition? Okay, we don't need rebuttal, because nobody spoke in opposition, unless you wanted to address the question, but I think that Mr. Anderson covered that. Okay, so I now shall close the public testimony portion of the hearing and ask for any council discussion, any council discussion. Okay, seeing everyone quiet would mean a motion is in order.
Madam Mayor, call for a heading of the resolution.
First resolution is 20131, a resolution of the city council of the city of West Covina, California, certifying the mitigated negative declaration of environmental impact for general plan amendment number 12-01, zone change number 12-01, tentative parcel map number 71942, and tentative tract map number 91960 pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act of 1970 as amended. Second resolution, 2013-2, a resolution of the city council of the city of West Covina, approving general plan amendment number 12-01.
Motion to adopt. Second.
A motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Now, it does state here, Mr. City Attorney, the planning commission and staff recommends that the council introduce the following ordinance. We need to redo the ordinance as well. So is there, yes, Mr. City Attorney, do I have a motion for that ordinance?
I'll make a motion to introduce the ordinance.
I need a motion and a second. To introduce would be on a roll call. Madam City Clerk? Herford.
Aye.
Sotelo.
Aye.
Sykes.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Okay, that should do that. Thank you so much for coming, everyone on the item. Our next item is item number seven, which is the city clerk's office, the departmental regular matters. There are options for filing the vacancy of the council seat by appointment or by calling a special election. It is recommended the city council review the options and have discussion. So at this point, we've got our staff reports. Do we want to have a report on that by staff? A council, pleasure.
I read it, I'm okay with it.
Okay, you all right with it? Anyone like a staff report? Are we okay? All right, then I'm looking for discussion on the item. Any council members would like to get started on that item?
I'll go first.
Madam Mayor, Pro Tim Herford.
Madam Mayor, I think option one with the appointment process is probably the best option. It's a long time to go until November next year, leaving the seat vacant, so I would like to make a motion to go with option one, with a seven-day period for people to submit applications.
Okay. Any other suggestion or a second on the motion?
Well, second emotion, I agree. I think option one would be the best for everybody here.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Well, just simply to say that we know the best option, if we could afford it, would be for the people to speak. But under our situation, I agree with Mayor Pro Tim, this is our option, best option. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Four, oh.
Madam Mayor, for clarity, seven-day period to submit letters of interest, to create applications and have residents pick them up exactly?
Last time we had an application, so I think.
Well, it was letters of, the last one was letters of interest, time before his applications. Letters of interest will speed up the process with seven days.
Absolutely. Letter of interest.
Make that part of my motion.
If that's, do we need Mr. City Attorney to clarify, or do we need to redo the motion, or is everyone okay with the motion?
Is there any objection to that?
Any objection to the motion, addendum to the motion? Okay, we're good? All right, thank you for that. Next item on the agenda is our successor agency. We will recess the city council meeting at 7:48 PM and convene the successor agency meeting. At this point, it looks like we need roll call.
Chairman Sanderson.
Here.
Vice Chairman Herford.
Here.
Board Member Sotelo.
Here.
Board Member Sykes.
Here.
Okay, do we have the consent? Do we have a motion for the consent?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second for the consent. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the successor agency board member comments?
Madam Mayor, make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So our, reconvene our city council meeting at 7:49 PM. And at this point, we are at our mayor or council member reports, the AV1234 conference. Anyone have any verbal reports or items on that agenda? Seeing everyone quiet, I would assume we move on to our next item, which is the city council requests for reports or studies, if no one has any of that, or council comments?
Madam Mayor, I would like to make a motion to adjourn in memory of Joanne Willner. I think probably, out of everybody in the room here, I probably knew, maybe Chris, but probably knew Joanne the longest. I met Joanne back when BKK landfill was open, and we lived close to the landfill, and we were all involved in the closure of the landfill. She joined a group at the time called the Raccoons, the Residents Against Contamination of our Neighborhood. Anyway, got to know Joanne real well. She lives in my neighborhood, and Bernie lives there, and so she will be missed. She was definitely a voice in the community that was reasonable and made all of us think sometimes about the other side of issues, or the same side of the issue. But I'm sorry to hear what happened. It sounded like it was a horrible experience, but I do think Joanne did a lot for our city, and appreciate all her time and effort here in the community. So I'll make a motion to adjourn in her memory.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember, our Mayor Pro Tim Herford. Councilmember Brad Sacks.
Madam Mayor, thank you. I would just like to add to that, when I came to the city hall and began to attend the meetings on a regular basis, I just admired her tenacity to research and understand every aspect of every agenda item. And I just tried to follow her lead. And there are times when, sometimes the reading gets tough. But I remember she did it, and that was without having the responsibility to be invited in. She did it voluntarily. And so I just would like to say I'm going to miss her. And thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, I know a resident came up earlier, and we will be sending her husband a letter, and it was also, you know, I appreciate you bringing that forward. I know, since I've been coming to council meetings, Ms. Willner has come, and she's just cared about our community, and people like that, that she never yelled, she never, you know, she just always brought her comments forward, and just was a very respectful woman, and she will be missed at our meetings. So with that, I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tim Herford. Do I have a second?
I'll flag it.
A second, okay. Thank you. Motion to adjourn, all in.